Good morning and welcome to this month's Downtown Aviation and Redevelopment Subcommittee. My name is Danielle Valenzuela, Councilmember for District 5. I'm also honored to chair this particular Subcommittee. I'm here with my colleagues from District 1, Councilwoman Thelda Williams, and from District 8, Councilwoman Kate Gallego. The first item on the agenda, we began this meeting and we end this meeting with the call to the public. Everyone is, anyone is able to speak on any one of these items by filling out an additional speakers card, but it's more than a reminder, we want to be sure that the public understands that they have the first and the last word when it comes to what we do here at the city. So that said, we don't have any cards to open with the call to the public. The next item is, if I can have a motion for the approval of the February 3 minutes.
Move approval.
If a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Items 4 and 5 are for consent. We can have a report if needed unless we have a motion. My colleagues are comfortable. Item 4 is airports, council and National North America membership, and item 5 is the American Association of Airport Executives membership.
I would move approval. I am very familiar with both these organizations and it's important that we belong to them.
Given that we have an ambitious federal agenda, including many issues related to airport noise, I will second the consent agenda.
I absolutely agree. So we have a motion and a second for items 4 and 5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 6 is the FAA Flight Path Update. Now several months ago, I want to say probably a year ago by now, we've had some issues at the airport with the flight path changes. I initially met with several neighborhood leaders who have been impacted. We have some council members who directly have been impacted, their particular district, so I thought it'd be best to have a standing item on the agenda to talk about the FAA flight paths and the updates. And that said, I welcome the Aviation Department.
Vice Mayor Valenzuela, thank you. It's a delight to be here again this morning. We don't have a very long update on flight paths, but there has been a lot of action taking place with respect to congressional activity that we think is very beneficial to our efforts to resolve the problem on the flight path, recent flight path changes here in Phoenix. So I would like to ask Deb Oestrecker to walk through those developments with you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett, Vice Mayor, and members of the Subcommittee. In response, this is regard to both the House and the Senate, the activity that Jim was just talking about. So I'd like to first start with the House. And I have no slides for this, this will be pretty quick. But in response to the sustained calls from Representative Ruben Gallego and the language sponsored by Senators McCain and Flake, legislation was introduced in early February by the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee Chairman Bill Schuster to include several key provisions in FAA reauthorization that could help provide relief to our residents suffering from aircraft noise. The bill will require the FAA to review these flight path changes if the FAA administrator determines that they've harmed communities in the vicinity of the airport. So this is, this is really very important. So the measure also requires the FAA to consider steps to mitigate aircraft noise-related concerns if requested to do so by a local community or airport operator. In addition, the FAA will be required to submit a report to Congress on how the agency intends to improve its community engagement efforts. If passed, this would create a process for the FAA to determine steps to mitigate the negative effects of these flight path changes in Phoenix and ensure other airports and communities have the opportunity, like we did not, to fully engage with the FAA before any future changes are made. And the legislation was approved by the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. While it's expected that the legislation would proceed expeditiously to the House floor, it seems that the bill may be held up until more votes can be secured. So that's on the House side. And then most recently, on Tuesday, Representative Gallego called on Congress in a floor speech to act to compel the FAA to consider steps to mitigate aircraft noise-related concerns. So he continues to bring this up every opportunity he has, and we know that he will continue to do so. On the Senate side, last week Senators McCain and Flake introduced the Aerospace Management Advisory Committee Act. This is to the Senate Commerce Committee. And this would require the FAA to create an airspace management advisory committee to review and provide input on future significant airspace changes. So there's official language in both the House and the Senate, and now it's really just a matter of both coming to an agreement on the final legislation. So both of these bills could take many forms, but our representatives in Washington DC are working on this daily. We're talking to them daily about it. In fact, we have a call just in a little while about these very issues. And so with the House and Senate support, we're confident that this will not rest. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Fisher. Any questions or comments by my colleagues? Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you to our staff for being very diligent and staying on top of this. I think that Congresswoman Ann Karppatrick has also been working very hard. She represents Arizona on the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee and has been regularly engaged and very involved in the shepherding of the bill so far. So it's been nice to see our delegation work together on this. Hopefully, we will do good both for our community and for many other communities that might have been impacted in the future.
Thank you so much for the effort. I know many of us will be out in DC next week, in fact, with the National League of Cities, and I'm sure we'll be checking in as well. We're fortunate to have such strong federal delegates leading the way out of Arizona. But as Councilman Gallego mentioned, there's a strong effort, and hopefully, you know, other communities will avoid the same type of issues that we've had here. And just an opportunity to thank our city staff, beginning with you, Mr. Bennett and Ms. Fisher, for all of the effort and just keeping the open door policy, if you will, with all of the community leaders. I've heard personally from a lot of the neighborhood leaders who have been impressed with the... Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Oestrecker, I apologize.
No worries.
Thank you. So the community has been very impressed with the accessibility they've had directly with the aviation staff, so I appreciate that effort as well. No other questions or comments, no cards on this particular item? Fantastic. Okay, thank you. I think, Mr. Bennett, you're going to stay there, right?
Yes, sir.
The next item is the valet parking services pilot program.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm joined here this morning by Christine Smith, Assistant Aviation Director, and also Ms. Chris Madsen, who's the Deputy Aviation Director for Business and Properties. The Subcommittee may recall that last year, the aviation was in front of this committee and then ultimately to the council with some proposed terms and conditions for a revenue contract solicitation for valet parking services at Sky Harbor. And what we would like to do today is revisit that item with the Subcommittee, since a lot has changed in this industry in the past few months. And we would like to propose some changes to the terms and conditions that had been previously approved by council to reflect the evolving valet parking services industry. And we think it's important that we make those changes to make sure that the newer models or even the traditional models, that all of the models in valet parking would have an opportunity to compete for this pilot program. With that, I would like to introduce once again Christine Smith, Assistant Aviation Director, that she will walk through some of the changes that we're proposing.
Thank you, Jim. Good morning, Chairman Valenzuela and Subcommittee members. We're really glad to be here today. Valet has been on the airport's mind for several years, and starting last year, a conceptual program was developed and was presented to the Phoenix Aviation Advisory Board, as well as to the Subcommittee and council to implement a pilot program. As part of that process, specific terms and conditions were identified. And we are here today to request approval to modify those terms and conditions based not only on industry feedback, but as well as additional research we've conducted since those presentations mid-last year. Thank you. By the way, this is like her third week here, so be kind.
We're glad to have the full team here and ready to work on this. Welcome.
And I would say, Mr. Chair and members of the Subcommittee, just from the City Manager's Office, we're thrilled that Chris has joined us. She has a very extensive history in the industry, has some well-renowned programs that she led at the Portland Airport, and so we think we're excited to have her here, is going to do great things, and is hitting the ground running. So I apologize, we haven't brought her around earlier. Jim's kept her sequestered doing much work these last few weeks, and so, but I did want to take a moment just to say how pleased we are that she chose to join our team.
So all we do is yell "Chris"?
In this building, many things, many people answer to that, yes.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Paul, for sharing that. So back to the background, we covered that just briefly. We want to talk a little bit about locations, what we have learned, talk about the modifications and next steps. What's very key to valet operations is access. And for this program, we have five main locations that are under consideration. Now, valet services are targeting a certain market, and that market includes customers who are interested in premium services and are willing to pay for those services. For example, not only do they drop off and pick up their vehicles, but they can expect car washing, oil changes, free newspapers, bottled water, all sorts of different services depending on what the valet operators provide and what the market is demanding. So as part of our review, we are identifying specific locations and different types of services that we would like to be provided to our customer base. As you know, this is considered a pilot because we really don't have a lot of market data at this time. When we originally started discussions with the industry, they too have limited knowledge in the market. However, they believe there is a market and are very interested in providing these services at the airport. With each of these locations, like many other airports, there's different types of logistical challenges. With Terminal 4, for example, some days during peak congestion times, it's difficult to get to the garages and to the curb. Terminal 2, Terminal 3, there's construction going on, and in late 2016, Terminal 2 is expected to be closed, and we will be moving all of that traffic over to Terminal 3. We will need a vendor that's willing to work with us and be able to make sure our customers aren't confused and that we don't interrupt our services.
Chris, saying that, how, from Terminal 2, do you expect that to be a large volume? I mean, how big a transition would that be to move it?
If I may, just for clarification, Terminal 2 will not be closing until late 2019.
Oh, okay.
Once the T-3 modification is complete, not in '16, I think, a little...
Yes, thank you.
That sounds better.
Right. And what I should have shared, Councilwoman Williams, is that we will be able to accommodate customers in the T-3 garage later in 2016.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for asking. When we went back to the industry following council's approval, we continued to hear feedback that they felt that the requirements were too restrictive. An example of that is the $22 per day rate. That was established to help preserve revenues to the airport. At the same time, we did not take advantage of what the valet industry can provide, such as those ancillary services I mentioned. In many airports, it's very common that a mag is set for these companies, as well as a revenue share opportunity in the services that are provided. So we are recommending that we change this model so that it can help the program be successful, as well as give us more information about the services our customers are looking for. With startup costs and limited time duration for the contract, that too provided some challenges for operators. However, at this time, we are honoring the direction of providing a pilot. We are also working to minimize startup costs where we can. For example, allowing them to use their own revenue generating systems or revenue tracking systems and integrating with our system. In some cases, valet companies develop or construct valet seating areas or VIP areas. We're not requiring that at this time. We're going to try to keep costs down and help make sure that they have the opportunity to also really know the market and what the needs are before we move forward with a long-term program. Another aspect was industry innovation. A lot of the companies express that they have unique services or approaches, and they would like us to help, would like us to evaluate those types of services as they think they're going to be meeting some key market needs. So to the changes that we're proposing, the main business term changes gets to eliminating the $22 requirement. We're also going to participate in revenue sharing for the ancillary services. We also had a requirement that an onsite manager was required. We're modifying this term in order to accommodate the offsite parking, so rather than requiring them to be onsite at all times, we are just requiring a dedicated manager that is available and involved with the daily operations. Minimum qualifications were also revised. For example, we require companies to demonstrate that they can manage up to 80,000 transactions a year. That is based on a very mature program for Sky Harbor. And so for startups, we recognize that a lower amount of experience was acceptable, and that is in the range of the 10,000, which is in your packet today, along with these other terms that we're proposing. The other change with that is it was also identified that we need to be careful because there are different types of valet operations. For example, event-driven valet, we're looking for more 365, seven-day-a-week type of services, and that takes a different type of operations plan and experience. The evaluation criteria is also being modified to allow for us to consider innovative approaches, as well as looking at their business plan, because as you know, integrating operations is critical. The firms that are successful are going to need to work very closely with our operations staff, our curb management staff, as well as our parking operator. And looking at how they plan to address those nuances on a daily basis is going to be important for our review criteria. For next steps, we are trying to move quickly, since this topic has been discussed for over a year now. We are planning to issue the RCS immediately following council approval. We also plan to award the contract prior to council break. Now, saying that, it's desirable, however, if there are concerns brought up by the industry or protest, that timeframe may have to be revisited. And then also, because it's a pilot program, we do want to come back to the DAR Subcommittee in maybe six months or so to give you a status of how the program is doing. With that, we are recommending modification of our business terms, requirements, and evaluation criteria, and to issue a new revenue contract solicitation. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, great. We do have two cards. I just want to clarify, the goal is to have this awarded before the council break?
That is correct.
That is the goal?
Yes.
Okay, that's it.
We also are striving to have the program in place in approximately 60 days following award.
Okay.
Team Chris is ambitious. We like it.
Good job, Chris. Strong work.
To start her off right.
All right, we do have two cards. We can go to the cards if you're okay with that.
That'd be great.
Okay. First card is Pamela Brown.
Is she prepared? Do you like her?
Because it's televised, if we can please have you at the mic.
Thank you very much. Pam Brown with SP Plus Airport Services. We are parking specialists, particularly in the airport space. So I just wanted to thank the city very much for getting the opportunity out, moving forward, and particularly for all the sessions that you've held, taking comment from the industry to help shape and look at how you approach this opportunity. So that's really the bulk of it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here, Ms. Brown. Brent Kleinman?
Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I am excited about the idea of valet at the airport. I'm one of the people that usually ends up there quite late for my departures, and this would help. But my concern is the fee structure. I was quite happy with the idea of having a set fee per day being charged and collected by the city on this. When we start getting into the idea of revenue sharing depending on what auxiliary items they sell, I know with some of the city parks that the city manages and the assumption of not only how many tickets they sell, where does the money get donated, and tracking this becomes very complicated. And the assumption that we are going to have to have somebody watching over to see, okay, are they doing a coupon that gives you a free oil change with every third valet, where then there's no revenue coming in, but they're getting revenue in different services? And the ability to share that revenue becomes very difficult. I like the idea of us offering this service as a city and moving forward with it, but I believe the flat rate gives the city a constant revenue generator with this, and we know our cost. You all sat through four hours almost yesterday talking about revenues at the airport. And if we're going to work in partnership with our offsite parking people and everybody in the Uber drivers, Lyft drivers, and all these different industries that interact with this, I think this has to be clear and consistent as far as what you are expecting in payment from here, because it can be conceived and perceived as there's going to be a definite discount on what these people may be paying in comparison to what the offsite other parking lots are paying on a daily basis. So I think a flat rate is a better way to go, but I look forward to the airport moving forward with this and we getting valet into the different terminals. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Kleinman. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Williams?
I have a couple of questions. I somewhat agree. I am not quite comfortable. I wish you would set some type of a minimum that they have to meet so that you have expectations, you can do your budgeting. And I think it's also a fairness issue. I understand this is a pilot project, but I think you're dealing with experienced companies that probably know what they're doing and have a good idea of what the revenue is going to be in the future. And then my second, what are you doing to protect the city from liability? I take it they're going to be moving other people's cars in and out, oil changes, whatever. How do you exempt us from any damage that's done to their vehicle?
Chairman Valenzuela and Councilwoman Williams, we actually are looking at establishing a minimum annual guarantee amount from the vendors. We are trying, we are working to finalize what that number may be. It may be in the $10 to $15 range versus the $22 range, plus a certain percentage of the revenues. So we are still working through those details. And in addition to that, regarding the insurance, there are several different types of coverages that we will be seeking, from general liability to garage keepers, to not only protect the cars, but also the possessions in the vehicles. And that was something that the Phoenix Aviation Advisory Board brought up as something that we need to pay attention to.
Thank you.
I'll also add, because there will be services involving potential oil changes, car washes, we will be looking to make sure that there are environmental requirements as well.
Councilwoman Gallego?
Thank you. I think it's exciting that we're moving forward with this, and I'm glad there's a potential to have it in place before the council break. I think we have a lot of big events coming up, and it would be wonderful to have more options at the airport. Could you sort of maybe respond a little bit more to the comments from Mr. Kleinman earlier, the second speaker from the public about fees?
Certainly. So in our research of peer airports, it's, there's several departments, or several airports that take different approaches. Some of them are much more customer-focused versus revenue-focused, and we are trying to balance both. For example, Dallas has a very extensive valet program and is very revenue-driven, and they earn revenues upwards of, I think, four, six million a year on valet services. Others barely break even. So we are trying to find that fine line as part of the pilot. He's correct that we do want stability, predictability, and we want to make sure that we don't erode our revenues if at all possible. And we hope to learn that through this program.
Wonderful.
Mr. Chair, Councilmembers, I would tell you, the model that is described by staff where there is a minimum manual guarantee and then a percentage of the gross is a well-traveled path for concession opportunities at the airport and is both very well-understood by staff and by industry. And so I think we have a lot of experience both how to measure and track. We know this very, very well. We're actually, I think, two of the top three non-aeronautical revenue categories are built on exactly this model of having to track revenues in terms of the rental cars and the terminal concessions. So I think staff has extensive decades of experience in how do we manage this with private third parties who do business on our property.
Wonderful. And so that type of model, if you have one proposal who says we're going to pay $25, but we need a parking space, and then someone who's going to pay $15, but we don't need a parking space in a city garage, it's the net to the city that you look at with that type of a structure?
We will be looking at the different proposals. So at this time, the plan is to allow companies to put in for either or both proposals. However, they will only be selected for one. So depending on how they compare to the other proposals, will be part of the award factor. In addition to the revenues, it's also the level of customer service, operation plans, et cetera.
Wonderful. And I think customer service is very important to us at America's friendliest airport. One of the things that I've really enjoyed with our other partners at the airport is they're often very stable and very involved in our community. So you think of retail as a transient industry where people might have a job for six months and move on, and it's been neat to meet people who have been working at the airport for a decade, or in some case, closes to two decades, and they really are familiar with the work environment, some of the unique challenges of working at the airport, and involved in our community. And so that, I think, does add something to us at the airport where we have great employees who are more stable. And so when we look at customer service here, I think, for me at least, when I'm looking at these proposals, it will be good to see what compensation they propose for their employees, and if we can really accept, expect people who might be there a little bit longer, and not just someone who has a two-month job and then moves on elsewhere, but someone who might really learn the ebb and flows of the airport and be a partner, employees who will give us great feedback in this pilot about how to make it better, because so often at Sky Harbor, our very best resources are the people who work there, who tell us what's working and what's not working, and help make it better. And so I think as we look to customer service, we need to look at what type of companies they are, how they're compensated their employees, are they going to be long-term business partners who are involved in the community? And then I always will be looking to make sure they have a good plan for equal pay for men and women, which is a longstanding priority of mine as well, and something that I think we can lead the way on at the city of Phoenix.
Chairman Valenzuela and Councilwoman Gallego, we will make sure to include that in the RCS.
Thank you so much.
Sounds good. We have no other cards. I'm, Mr. Kleinman? Yeah, I can, I think it's at the discretion.
The chair's discretion.
Please.
Thank you very much. I just, I was listening to the answers, Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilwoman. The tracking of the incidentals, I know you gave two examples of rental cars and onsite concessions, I believe are going to be very different than what we're looking at here with off-site services being offered by these people, be it newspapers, water bottles, if those are given, or if there are extra charges. Also, the one thing I didn't hear, which I just thought of while I was sitting down, is the security measures for the drivers that are working this valet company, is that being put into this proposal as well, as far as what their requirements are? Because I know we just, again, yesterday discussed background checks for an Uber driver. What is the background check standard for a valet parker who's taking cars on and off of property, possibly spending time at the terminals unattended? So those would be my questions, just as follow-ups, but thank you very much.
Great questions. And will you answer that?
Chairman Venezuela, we actually are trying to look at the data, how to collect information regarding how these companies attract and retain their customers. Regarding the services, some services are provided free in other venues, some are charged. That will be part of the information we will evaluate in the proposals. Regarding security, all of our concession contracts right now require the standard FAA background check and security threat assessments, and we will continue to require that as part of this process.
Okay, great. Safety is paramount. It's the number one priority of any government, and certainly at the airport, safety is paramount. So thank you so much for that question, Mr. Kleinman, and thank you so much for the response. Yesterday was a great day for this city council. We are adding services to our airport. Uber and Lyft and others can come out and be part of the long list of options that our travelers can take. This is something that I think is overdue. It's, I think it's a good idea to start with the pilot, to figure out what the market is, to move us in that direction. But, you know, we have one of the busiest airports in the country. It's only going to continue down that path. It's a world-class city, and it is a service that travelers are expecting. So I'm really excited to see this process move forward. Like my colleagues, I certainly would like to see this complete before the council break. We have, you know, near, what, six or seven weeks of a council break in the middle of summer that I think is still very valuable time, not only for the city and for the traveler, but for the vendor. And so if, this is something that we can, you know, on one hand, I'm asking you to make sure that it's expedited, but obviously it needs to be done correctly more than anything. So fortunately, we have Chris here.
Mr. Chair, I think the watchword, to quote John Wooden, is "we will go quickly, we won't rush." And so we can...
Thank you, Paul. So, so that said, I...
Move approval of staff's recommendation?
Second.
All right, good. We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. We move on to item eight, Terminal Modernization Construction Update with Mr. Bennett.
Vice Mayor Venezuela and members of the subcommittee, I'm joined here this morning by Art Fairbanks, who is our Terminal Three Modernization Project Manager. We thought it would be a great idea to kind of update you on the activity that I'm sure when you go out there, you see taking place. And it's a very exciting project for the airport, as Christine was talking about in terms of the valet concession. You know, at some point, Terminal Two will be closed, and those airlines will migrate to Terminal Three. But it's all dependent upon Art getting this building done on time, on schedule. So with that, we would like to share with you the status of the program and answer any questions that you may have.
Vice Mayor, members of the committee, good morning. My name is Art Fairbanks. I'm the Special Project Administrator, responsible for coordinating the activities of all the stakeholders into the project as we move forward. Today, I'd like to introduce Ward Helm, who's with us in the audience today, and he's responsible for the management and the construction of the actual project. And I'd also like to introduce Randy Williams, who is the Project Director for the Hunt Austin joint venture. I'll ask him to stand. And so I wanted to bring them with you today as we walk through construction of this project moving forward. And it's my pleasure today to give you an update of the overall project. And so anytime we talk about the project, I always talk about the important goals of the project moving forward. And as approved by the Phoenix City Council in October of 2014, the Terminal Modernization Project is a $590 million improvement of Terminal Three at Sky Harbor with the goals of improving customer experience and making it more efficient to operate, as well as minimizing disruptions to the overall airport as the project moves on. And our goal of making the terminal more efficient to operate can be realized by building a LEED silver building, which we're tracking towards, and it's expected to save as much as 40% of electricity use as currently being used in that terminal building. This will be achieved by using new vertical circulation systems, which will also move passengers through the building much more faster, and that's another indicator of efficiency of the terminal. And because of the nature of working in an active airport environment, this project's phased to keep the terminal open during construction. Essentially, it's a terminal project being built inside an active terminal with 5 million people walking through the construction site. So it's important that we coordinate our activities. And so this approach maintains the gates for airlines to use, and we also have to be careful that we keep our business partners informed as the project moves forward. And the current project is currently within budget and is currently on schedule. And so I often remind viewers that this project is funded with airport revenue only, and only the people who use the airport pay for this improvement. Its funds are dedicated to aviation as an enterprise fund and do not compete with important city services such as police, fire, parks, and libraries. And so some of the enhancements, improvements to the terminal that we can see shortly is that our customers will notice an expanded ticket hall that will feature 66 new ticket counters, and will give ample space for both the Terminal Three airlines and the Terminal Two airlines as they move over. And these modern amenities will have 48 self-serve kiosks. We know a lot of our customers really enjoy that self-serve option to move through the terminal, and especially our frequent travelers who know how to move quickly to that kiosk and to their gate. And the airlines have indicated that they're exploring also self-tagging opportunities to further automate and give that level of service to their passengers who use Terminal Three. And so an additional benefit of these modern counters is they're constructed with a common-use technology. And what that means is ultimate flexibility for the airport in the long run. This will make it easier for the airlines to expand their offerings, to offer new routes, as well as promotes that flexibility as airlines merge or even new entrants arrive at Sky Harbor. And so one of the highlights is our consolidated checkpoint that's currently under construction. And so many of our passengers who travel through Sky Harbor have indicated that moving through the security checkpoint process is the most anxiety-producing part of their trip. The Terminal Modernization Program has developed a consolidated checkpoint to speed this travel. This checkpoint will take the old cramped checkpoints that were built over the roadway and move them together, which will promote efficiency, not only for our travelers, but also the transportation, security administration staff. And so beyond being a faster process for our customers, we expect this experience to be more pleasant by offering an expected wait-time counter. So before you get in the line, you know how long to expect to come through security, which should help to loosen anxiety. And our savvy travelers will find that we have ticketing kiosks right outside the entrance to the checkpoint, so they can go straight to that ticketing kiosk and into the checkpoint, and again, move even faster through if they desire. And shown on the screen is a generous recomposition area that will allow passengers to replace shoes and belts in a comfortable setting and move to their gate on the remodeled north and south concourses at their desired pace. And so if I could talk briefly about concessions, upon clearing the security checkpoint, our customers will move into the Terminal Three Grand Hall. In this space, passengers will have the opportunity to enjoy new offerings for food, beverages, and retail that will be phased in throughout the project. And we expect this terminal will have equivalent offerings to those that are so popular currently in Terminal Four. This rendering above shows conceptual offerings. So to give an idea for the space, the Aviation Department, the Business and Properties Division is currently working on a plan for a public procurement process and phased opening of these services. And so the anticipation is presenting an update to the Downtown Aviation Redevelopment Subcommittee sometime in June, and then returning prior to the end of 2016 with a recommendation as far as timeline to move forward these offerings. On the screen, you'll see a graphic representing the project construction timeline as work is moving forward aggressively to complete the first phase of the terminal processor, the portion of the process that delivers immediate benefits. So we get some of the very best benefits in the first piece that is turned over. It's expected to be completed in fall of 2016, and that is represented by the purple line on the graph. When this initial portion of the project is turned over, Phoenix passengers will have a benefit of a better Skytrain connection, new ticket counters, and the consolidated checkpoint immediately on the first day. These early improvements will produce the greatest benefits in the quickest fashion so that we can enjoy efficiencies while the balance of the building continues to be constructed. And so construction on the South Concourse is scheduled to begin in early 2017, and completion of the whole project is expected in 2020. Also, given our aggressive schedule to deliver the improvement, construction is moving fast, and our design-build contractor, Hunt Austin, is mobilizing crews in a timely fashion to keep the project moving. And one of the things I like to mention when I mention the construction is an important benefit of this construction project is its economic impact generated by the over 1,000 construction workers who are making this infrastructure a reality. The Hunt Austin team shared with me the other day that over 140,000 labor hours have been worked by their construction crews just in the last six months on this project. And then in another important measure, the self-selected goal of 20% utilization of small business enterprise continues to be achieved by the contractor as we move forward. And so today, I wanted to highlight four quick areas where the dramatic results are most evident. These areas are the west vertical circulation, the exterior facade, the recomposition area I mentioned a minute ago, and the new grand hall. So I want to show an image of the new west vertical circulation under construction. And perhaps this is the biggest change, is the addition of this vertical circulation in the form of escalators and elevators on the west area. This newly expanded area will connect both the Phoenix Skytrain, the consolidated checkpoint, and the new ticketing hall, so our customers can efficiently navigate the terminal. And the construction of a steel overhang will protect the west exposure of the building from the sun while still allowing for those spectacular views of downtown Phoenix and Piesto Apique. And the part of the building was constructed to be functional, but also has an energy-efficient portion that it brings to the project. And finally, it's also designed to be beautiful. The building will honor the history and the good bones of the structure while allowing passengers from all over the country to enjoy over our 330 days of sunshine here in Phoenix. I want to show an image of the exterior facade, and the image that you're looking at on the screen is the view of the exterior facade from the north part of the terminal on the exterior. And it shows that the project is able to reuse those good bones of the building and install high-efficiency glass. Passengers looking from inside the terminal will be treated to great views of Phoenix. And the inset view can notice the old 70s-style bathtubs that were covering the windows, the weight and placement of these windows, obscured views, and also create limitations on the structural changes that were needed to install that vertical circulation throughout the building. And I want to just mention a few energy-efficient improvements as part of the building as well. LED lighting will be used throughout the terminal and the concourse. Every fixture is an LED fixture. And so those will use about 30% of the energy of the incandescent fixture. And further, those LED lights can be dimmed for additional energy savings. So that's an important thing that we wanted to make sure we mentioned. As well as the entrance itself to the terminal will be done through vestibules, which will help to protect and keep the air conditioning in and keep that good energy profile constant throughout the building so that we get great utilization of the air conditioning. And finally, one of the ones that was brought up earlier this week was the actual air handling units, which circulate air throughout the building. Now, these systems are a lot smarter than when they were installed in 1979. So they come with software that will allow to shut down unnecessary fans and continue monitoring the system. And that energy savings on an annual basis is about 200,000 kilowatts a year in terms of each one of those air handlers and what they can do to, again, make this not only a beautiful building, but very energy-efficient building. I wanted to show just the beginnings of the security checkpoint, and this is its current condition as we move aggressively forward. The inset of the image shows the volume of space and kind of the final look that we can expect. And the larger image represents the work to date in terms of opening up the floors and allowing our passengers to circulate more effectively through the building through an open core, which will lead to much more flexibility to the north and south concourses. I'm now showing an image of the great hall. The image of the Terminal Three Great Hall under construction demonstrates the volume of space that will welcome travelers to Phoenix upon their arrival. And a number of skylights are being installed and will be present, which will show off the Phoenix sky and also make a great place for a meet-and-greet. We find that a number of our customers use Sky Harbor in a way that a lot of other airports aren't being used, that meet-and-greet experience for friends and family that have been away, or people that come back from missions, or people that come back from military service. So we want to make that experience special as well. And so this level will also have a museum gallery, and will feature comfortable seating. And one of the things, I assure people, plenty of electric outlets for all of our customers as we move through. So Vice Mayor and council members, you can see as construction progresses on the Terminal Three project, we're moving aggressive to give our customers a high-quality experience that it's going to be uniquely Phoenix. The building will be energy-efficient, easy to navigate, and will feature technology that's worthy of America's friendliest airport. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Gallego?
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. It's been fun to watch it go up. I'm very excited that it's a LEED building and that we're innovating in that area. How do we compare to other airports and new terminals in terms of environmental impact?
So Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, many redesign projects now are moving forward LEED design, and so that's an expectation at many of the modernizations throughout the country as we move forward. These are special challenges because we essentially have a structure that was built in 1977, 1978, and we're going back to retrofit. So it is a challenge, but many of the airports across the country are doing that, and we're committed to doing that for our customers as well.
Wonderful. We are hearing from a lot of folks how important Sky Harbor is as an economic engine, particularly on the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing side. Some of the larger projects in the East Valley have been winding down, and this is really a key employment source for those technical folks who we need to keep in our local economy and, you know, keep getting new apprenticeships and new people trained. And so this is one of the big engines for the area, as well as for small business. Every time we're at Hispanic Chamber, African Black Chamber, others, they keep asking for updates on the small business side. Could you maybe go into a little bit more detail on the economic impact and some of the, on both the construction side and also the small business side, some of the success stories from this project?
Vice Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, yes. So indeed, this has been a major project, and we have seen groups from all over the state participate, particularly the small business, our utilization there. They committed to a goal of 20%. You know, the last number I saw was tracking at over 24% in terms of involving our small businesses here in Arizona on the actual project. And we know that we've had a number of contractors that have worked very hard to make sure that they can deliver the amount of service they provided in those contracts, and also know which amounts can go to small businesses as we move through. So it's been a very collaborative process. I know there's been extensive outreach to the small business community that as the program was ramping up, there were several sessions. But those sessions continue quarterly as we continue, and really, we're in year two of a five-year construction project. So we can expect this same level of effort. And even more, as the South Concourse will be built, there'll be a time where both the terminal processor and the South Concourse will be under construction at the same time. And so we expect that economic impact to be even more powerful at that time. at the same time. And so we expect that economic impact to be even more powerful at that time.
Art, go ahead. I was going to say, Art, could you, you know, the, the direct construction cost is somewhere between 300 and 400 million. Is that, am I about in the ballpark? So, so to the councilwoman's question, 20% of that number is somewhere between 100, you know, 150 and 200, I'm sorry, it's going to be like 60 to 80 million dollars. Is that, is that approximately correct of where the spend is going?
Mr. Blue, we would expect at, at least 80 million dollars in terms of small business enterprise as it's tracking right now through, through the year two of a five-year project.
That must be one of the largest commitments to small business happening anywhere in Arizona.
Absolutely. In fact, I think as we sit here today, this is probably the largest, certainly one of the largest projects in the whole state that is underway. And we have a dedicated staff person, Valerie Churchwell, that interacts with all of the small business communities to make sure that they're constantly aware of the contracting opportunities as part of the program. Works very closely with the Hunt Austin Joint Venture Partners to make sure that we're doing the appropriate outreach.
Could you share a few success stories of small businesses who've been part of this?
Well, maybe, maybe look back here to Ward.
I knew, we knew we had them come for a reason.
Ward, Ward.
Hi, Ward Helm, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, locally, we've had a number of small businesses that have stepped up basically to, well...
I'm sorry, I didn't realize this was a trick. It was not meant to be a difficult question.
Maybe if you would just share with the committee, the trades that have been, being supplied by small businesses, which trades have been involved.
Basically, from a trade standpoint, we look at our large, the, the structural steel, metal building, the, and we try to use a small portion of that, you know, in other words, try to maximize. They go out, those subs go out and meet with the various SBEs and ask them to participate in it in terms of, like I say, maximizing that effort. And we utilize the, like I say, the structural steel, the, the steel stud, the various, even some of the construction-related items, like our scaffolding group. So, on that level, like I say, we try to maximize as much as possible those uses.
And, and might I suggest, Vice Mayor, to the committee, that why don't we supply you with a, a kind of a detailed report of by the trades, the companies, the local businesses that have been involved in the project? You, you might find that very useful.
A great success story, and we ought to brag about our commitment and what an economic engine.
We'll, we'll supply that information to you and let you understand exactly the details of who's been involved.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Councilwoman Williams?
Looking at that project, do you have backup generators if something happened?
Vice Mayor to Councilwoman Williams, the airport has several backup generators throughout the, the campus for various systems that we operate. I, Ward may be able to answer it specifically, but for most of the terminal components, the backup generators are designed for life, safety, and functionality, not necessarily to keep the building running on a full-time basis should there be a power outage, but to make sure that all of the life, safety functions are still operational in a power outage.
And Councilwoman Williams, I might also mention, part of the project is bringing in redundant power sources as well. So, we're increasing the resiliency of this building to make it more reliable in the long run. So, so besides that, we, it will be much more resilient.
Okay. That was going to be my next question. And, and I've had questions asking about Art. And Jim, you and I both go back a long ways. On the face of Terminal Three, there, I think it's on the north side, they look like K's, back-to-back K's, and it's, it was quite controversial 20 years ago. Does that remain, or does it get included in the new project?
The council, Vice Mayor, Councilman, Councilwoman Williams, the facade is being replaced as part of this project.
So, they'll be gone?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just curious. And is there going to be other artwork on the outside as well as the inside? I heard that the big pendulum is gone. That's your...
The, the aircraft, the aircraft that is currently, you know, on display in the escalator vestibule of Terminal Three.
Airplane.
The, that aircraft will be dismantled and moved, and I, I assume that it's confirmed 100%, and we will be moving it and actually putting it on display in a Skytrain station at 44th Street. And so that is underway, and the schedule for which is not too far out, actually. And then there is the percent for art for the building. So, there, in fact, the team has been meeting with the, the arts folks, trying to push through on that. It should, should be some pretty exciting designs that'll be going into the building. And then there'll be on the, this west facade outside, there'll be a, where it used to be an old control tower where you go around Terminal Three. That'll be a landscaped area and garden outside of the building. So, it'll get a completely different feel and look, and we hope to even have some landscaped architecture and art involved in that.
With a dog park?
There will be, there will be dog parks, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sky Harbor is America's friendliest airport for both two-legged and four-legged participants.
Great. No, no further questions or comments. We don't have any cards on this. This is just for information, correct? Don't need any other action here. Thank you so much for the update. Okay. Again, we, we began the meeting and end the meeting with the call to the public. We don't have any cards for the, the final call to the public. Any future agenda items or requests?
Mr. Chair, members of the subcommittee before you represents both what we currently anticipate for April, which is the standing item for flight paths. The convention center has a marketing, marketing contract that is coming up for rebid. And then the airport team will want to talk about the rebidding of concessions inside of Terminal Three, kind of timely to follow one to the other, so you can understand kind of both their process and get your concurrence with the, how the packages will be kind of assembled before we come forward with specific RFP elements and requirements and schedule.
Okay.
And then we, we obviously will, you know, be happy to hear any other, or add any other item you're interested in.
Any other requests by my colleagues? Thank you so much, Mr. Blue. This meeting is adjourned.